October 3rd. And this is a meeting of the Sherborn zoning board of appeals related to the comprehensive permit for Washington Street project under Phoenix Partners. And so I think I sent an email the other day summarizing to this board sort of what our, how the deliberations sort of work. I'm going to inartfully sort of just state it again for the record here for those on the phone, those on the call. You know, it is really our charge to be the the entity that determines, you know, the comprehensive permit and takes the place of all our local boards. You know, the applicant has requested waivers from local regulations and it's our job to balance, you know, the compelling need for affordable housing, which has been determined to be a critical local need with our own, as opposed to, you know, whether or not our own local regulations supersede, you know, the sort of state standards and whether those are more compelling to impose for particular, for health and safety reasons, let's say, than the state standard and would sort of trump the local housing need that's already been determined by statute to be compelling. And so really what that means is that we really need to essentially find ways to make the project work and compliant as much as we possibly can. That is really our charge. And, you know, we have to balance the local regulations and the applicability of local regulations with this, with this compelling affordable housing need. So that being said, also, you know, conditions are, are, conditions are one lever that we have to try to, let's say, thread the needle of maybe, you know, threading some of the, the local regs in a mitigated fashion into the final permit. And so we should impose conditions where we find, we feel that they are necessary to essentially balance those needs and make the project work. So that being said, Jonathan, I know that Rick, my predecessor probably did a much better job than I, but if you have anything you'd like to add, please feel free, any comments or perspectives.
No, I, I, I think your comments are excellent and well taken concerning our charge. And, you know, sometimes it's said that people don't like 40B. And I'd like to express that my own attitude is that 40B is the law of the land. And I respect our duty under that law. And I would not let my own personal feelings about the public policy interfere in any way. We do need affordable housing in Sherburne. There is no question. So in terms of the public policy issues, that is one of them at stake. And I agree that we, we really need to try to find a way to make this project work without endangering the safety or health concerns of our community, which of course we stridently protect.
Thank you, Jonathan. I appreciate your comments there. So with that, I think the best thing to do is to maybe, you know, discuss sort of, Gene, can you pull up the waiver list that the applicant provided back? At the beginning of the process, one of the earlier attachments. I think that's probably the best way to proceed to see where the board feels. If we can sort of go through the waivers that have been requested and see if there's any objections to providing those waivers and we'll start there. I'll see if I can find it if Gene's not available.
It's, I'm here. I'm just looking at the, I'm looking for the website. That's all.
Mr. Hammond, did you have any questions or comments before we sort of get started or any, anything concerning you about the process or just anything unclear?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the, the one part I guess I don't, I'm not 100% clear on and candidly, I've sort of done my best to try to keep up with the back and forth that kind of went on between, through email, between the different meetings, but it seemed like there was a lot of concerns raised and proposed mitigations sort of proposed by the applicant. I was going through trying to wrap my head around how many additional, there seems to be, I think, two, maybe three different things that there wasn't really consensus on, but there was a bunch of things that the applicant did that sort of addressed some of the concerns. Do we have one place where those things are memorialized or how does that pass through into the final decision one way or the other? Just to make sure that everything is.
Yeah. So I think you're, if you're referring to basically, so, so just to recap right before we get into the waivers specifically, I think you're referencing the debate between the applicant and both the Board of Health around the the septic design, depth of groundwater, Title V versus local standard and the restoration plan that conservation would like the applicant to provide, which both of the requirements of, both of our, you know, both local boards are asking for things that are beyond the state standards. Those are our local requirements. And so I think, you know, the question, the key question we're going to have to get to on the septic is do we accept the Title V permit? Or do we ask the applicant to raise through sewer gravel essentially that system? The Board of Health's asking for another foot. The applicant says that the additional foot would cause more impact to the wetlands and is not necessary and is also not consistently required. I would say that we could, you know, just hypothetically, if we, if we did ask, if we did condition an additional foot of height for the septic, the applicant could appeal that. And I don't know how strong of a legal basis we would have to enforce that ultimately. The local standard on the septic Title V seems to be the standard that is recognized, you know, and so we could, and just, just so you know how the appeal process works, if the applicant appealed or a neighbor appealed or a butter appealed, we, it would go back to HAC. They most likely would send it back to us. HAC is the Housing Appeals Committee. They would remain it back to us. We reopen the hearing. We just did that on North Main project. And then if they don't like our decision on that one, it goes back to HAC and they make the decision based on whether the local standard is compelling enough. And so I think that that's just how the appeal process works. So we could delay the project. I don't know ultimately if we would be successful on the septic issue. I don't know one way or another, but that's just how it works if you're, if that helps.
Yeah. I slowly coming up to speed here and appreciate you bearing with me and like, I think those are.
This is complicated and it's taken me 18 months of experience to get to this point. So.
Yeah. But it just in review of like the Tetra Tech comments back in August, there were some conditions that they recommended. And then the applicant sort of addressed those things and said, yes, I'll do this. Yes, I'll do this. I don't know if it, trying to figure out if when there's agreement there, yes, we'll do this to address a local concern, how that gets memorialized.
In the, in the final decision. So once we decide which waivers we're going to grant or deny and which conditions we're going to oppose and deny, that all gets written into the final comprehensive permit decision. And it's memorialized there. And you're more than welcome to take crack at that decision if you'd like, but I have a feeling I'll be the one writing the draft of that.
Yeah, I don't think I'm up to it quite yet.
Anyway, so looking at the, let's sort of, do you want to, do you want to go through the waivers generally? Or do you want to talk about maybe some specific topics? You want to, you want to sort of stay in this thread of, you know, septic and concert, sorry, Board of Health and Conservation requests? Do you want to, you want to dig into those? And then we can talk about the specific waivers another time. It's up to you, John. I mean, I think whatever's going to help you sort of, you know, muddle through this.
I think going through the waivers that the applicant has requested is probably most helpful for me at least. And then, you know, obviously I think those two issues are, I get those. Those are sticky.
Okay. Let me pull up. And just to be clear, we, we closed the hearing on the 23rd, I believe. So we roughly have until, we've got 40 days. So let's call it November, you know, second, give or take. We want to be done with our deliberation. So we've got about a month, we've got about a month before we've got to wrap this up. So just keep that in mind as we're thinking about the next meetings.
Yep. That's what I found.
Well, I can't move my, hold on a sec. I gotta. Gene, can you pull it up? Like I'm having an issue with moving things on my screen at the moment.
I am trying to find it. I had to come downstairs to the office. I was on my laptop.
Oh, I can do it. I think I can do it now.
I got it. I got it.
It's the June 2025 generic draft waiver list.
All right. I am sharing. Share. Can you see it?
Yes, almost. There we go.
Great. That being enlarged a bit for those of us without reading glasses.
Okay. So what's 760 C M R 31? I'm going to assume that we're going to purpose and authority. I'm not sure exactly what the first one is, but we can come back to that. I don't think that most of these waivers, these are just time limits and filings. I think they're included as a matter of course. Gene, can you scroll down? I don't think that we're issuing any, we don't have any timely filing issues. And this is just included. He, yeah, too far down. Can you go to page two?
All right. Here's one.
There we go. So on the filing limit and the time, filing and time limits, I assume there's no objections to waiving these, even though I don't even think most of them are applicable, given the, given the completeness of the applicant submission and the timeliness, but thoughts from the board members on these waivers? We can look, we can revisit this too. We don't have to take a vote now, but does anyone have any concerns with, with these today?
I don't have any concerns with those waivers.
Jonathan or Todd?
No, not for me.
No concerns on my end.
Okay. So the next one is the zoning bylaws. I think that there is no setback issues. There's no, we're not in the setbacks from a property line standpoint. And although 40B affordable housing is not, I don't think it's a specifically permitted use in our bylaws. It doesn't matter anyway, because even if it wasn't, it would, it would trump. So I don't see any sort of health and safety zoning concerns with this project from a citing position or a use position that would outweigh any local regs that would outweigh the compelling need for affordable housing. So any thoughts from the board members there on the zoning issue and happy to open up, you know, for discussion and questions if you're unclear.
No issues.
We're talking uses and distances, right? That's what we're talking about with zoning. So.
Yeah.
In conflict with 40B.
Correct. Gene, can you go to page three if possible? Todd, any concerns? Gene, can you go to page three? Todd, any concerns on use or distances?
No, I don't have any concerns on that.
Jonathan or Jonathan? And you can, you can reserve, you can, you can reserve your concern for another meeting if you'd like. You don't, it's not speak now or forever hold your peace. So.
Okay.
I'm just trying to take some notes so I can put together, I can start working on a sample decision and give you all something a little cleaner and structured to work through at our next meeting.
Okay. I don't have any concerns.
Nor do I.
Gene, can you go to page four? Five? And six? All right. So the Sherborn Wetlands Regulations, do we want to, is this the only two waivers? Let me just check real quick to make sure the two subject matters, the subject matters left are conservation and Board of Health is anything else. We can tackle the easy ones first. Let's punt on the Wetlands Regulations for now. The groundwater protection bylaw. Thoughts on that? I think that we have generally waived this bylaw in the past. Is that right, Jonathan?
Yes, I think.
While we punt on that one, I'll come back to that as well. We will come back to chapter 17 and chapter 21 waivers, the chapter 22 waiver, construction of a driveway. I don't have an objection to that. Anyone seen any objections to that waiver?
No.
What about? The stormwater management plan? I believe Tetra Tech, I believe there was some mitigate, I believe there was some stormwater mitigation in the plan already. So if we did waive this bylaw, we could also then impose a condition related to stormwater in the design that was proposed. Consistent with the design that was proposed.
Yeah, I think that was their recommended condition five.
Tetra Tech.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're in agreement, we're going to waive the stormwater management bylaw, but impose conditions with that, related to that, which we can talk about at another meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm in favor of that, Mr. Chair.
So chapter 25 stormwater waiver with conditions. The special permits. Gene, can you scroll down to page eight? So we have rules and regulations governing scenic roads and site plan review. In this instance, we are the site plan, we are basically the reviewers of the site plan. So I would generally waive a section that both, both of the, excuse me, the second section two listed there. And then the first one, sorry, go in reverse order also would be generally waived. I don't feel that the scenic road bylaw outweighs the compelling need for affordable housing. So unfortunately that would also be probably waived. Board, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree.
And is Washington Street even a scenic, is Washington Street a scenic road? I don't even.
No.
I don't think that it is. So it would be waived anyway. Or not applicable. Board of Health Regulations is next. Let me see what we have after that and we may just punt. So it looks like the only regulations we have left are the individual Board of Health requirements and the general sort of wetlands protection, the Sherborn Wetlands Protection. So I, why don't we, why don't we start with the conservation? Let's go back up to the Wetlands Protection at page four. I think. Is that right? Was that where it was? Okay. It was on page six. Yep. Thank you. And so I think we are, at least for me, I mean, I think we will be waiving the local regulations and implying condition, applying conditions relative to what we hear the applicant agree to in the last meeting, which was that except for the backyard to the sort of southeast of, south, southeast of the structures, he was willing to follow the local regulations, sort of two to one replacement restoration plan. And there was also other details that the Conservation Commission provided about the restoration plan. And it seemed like the applicant was generally, you know, amenable to everything, except for that one area that I described. So is that whatever, is that, is that the members' recollection of sort of how that shook out at the last meeting and where we are? And if, and if so, I can take a crack at writing the conditions to reflect that in a draft and we can review that in the next meeting.
Yes, that's my recollection that the applicant agreed to the planting scheme for the front of the building and was concerned about the rear of the building to the extent that it might interfere with the availability of backyards for families. And so and he otherwise agreed with the planting scheme to the, well, looking at the plan to the left.
Yeah. Which is where also the trail, the Bailey Trail runs as well. And did we, I can't recall, was there, did we feel that there was a, I know that the trail location was discussed. I thought maybe a condition was discussed. Do we feel that there's a condition necessary on the relocation of the trail? Was there, I can't recall if there was a particular concern there, just if it was going over the septic or next to the septic.
Well, I think he moved the, if I recall correctly, he, he moved the trail from its current location, stated that he can do that anyway, but it was at the request of the Board of Health to not have it over top of the septic system.
Yeah. So I think that's probably a condition that we would want to put into this, to the conservation conditions, that the trail is sort of, we designate where that trail would go a little bit.
I apologize for the background noise. The landscapers have arrived and outside my window, I have three different machines in full.
We don't hear anything. So you're good. A good, good noise filter on that. So all right. So I will work on the conditions for the restoration plan. And I'll share that with folks in a draft for the next meeting. Is there anything else around conservation that we want to talk about? Is, does anyone have any particular concerns around the Vernal Pool or debate? I mean, I think I would recognize, the applicant seems to recognize it as a Vernal Pool. I'm going to recognize it as a Vernal Pool and I would probably write conditions to reflect the importance of that space and protecting that space. In particular, if I saw any gaps into what conservation asked for, just for clarity's sake. Does, does anyone have any perspective about that or disagree with that, that approach?
Oh.
No, I think that makes sense. But there were, and I, I think it was conservation that brought up the like driveway coatings as it relates to runoff for the pool too, that I think the applicant was generally amenable to. So I don't know if that's part of this or not.
Yep. That would be, thank you for highlighting that. Yep. The driveway sealant, yeah, I think coal tar based driveway sealant would be prohibited. Yeah.
And then there was, and I don't know if there was ever a resolution or we just talked about it, but there was an ask for like a week's, a week's heads up for the identification of source of fill. And that one was sort of unresolved because the applicant was concerned with the nature of sourcing the fill and it happens super quick. And I think he said he wanted 24 hours, but I don't remember if that ever got resolved or overcome by events.
Yeah, I think we, that's a good question. We have previous, we have language around fill from previous decisions that we can pull from. So I'll look at that. You know, generally, you know, you want clean fill. I think we can put conditions around it. And I'm, I'm thinking just based on, again, how, you know, for those of you who, who have not had the joy of building a house, let me, let me just explain how this goes a little bit. So, you know, oftentimes, right? You don't, you have too much of one material and then you don't have enough all of a sudden. And, and fill and trucking can get very expensive. And so one thing that happens as you are going through these projects is you look for someone else who has all of a sudden an excess of some fill material and you're hoping to get, you know, locally. But you don't always know when those projects are happening, right? So it could be a local contractor doing a septic and has some, you know, clean fill because of, not, not the septic, you know, waste itself, but some other areas around it, you know, putting in a new system or a foundation, whatever. So I think the issue is if you don't jump on those opportunities to get local, less expensive fill, then you're often buying more expensive fill from somewhere else. My preference is to keep dirt within the town generally. And so I would want to, I want to think about a condition that's going to help promote low gathering, local clean fill versus necessarily trucking in fill from wherever else. That's just my, that's my perspective. Sometimes you can't avoid it because it has to be structural fill and that's a different question, but I just want to, that's my perspective. I want to hear your, the board's perspective on this.
Well, I, I think that you've identified some very important issues there, Zach. I think that I think that it's not unwise for us to request or condition that the applicant use locally sourced fill where available. And I think in terms of the amount of time, I think we've got to give the applicant a reasonable period within which to identify that fill and give notice. And I, 24 hours is, I think, a little bit extreme. I think maybe 72 hours.
What if, what if we had a 24 hour notice for something that was sourced from Sherborne? And 72 from something that's outside of town, because then you could in theory verify the source, and if there's an issue, could be remediated? I don't know. Our folks' thoughts on that?
Okay, well.
I think we'd want, so my perspective is I think seven days is an awful huge ask, and 24 is the exact opposite spectrum, and somewhere in the middle, I was, 72 seems very reasonable to me. I guess I just don't know if you were to say that for a local 24 hour notice, if whomever needs to would have the duty to review that notification and the materials coming from that site has the facilities and ability to respond within 24 hours, or if it's, that's an unreasonable ask, even if it's local? I don't know how that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if it's, I'm thinking about the big projects that we have coming up locally that might produce a lot, and might, we might want to try to keep that, you know, instead of bringing in outside dirt, just keeping it local, but.
Yeah, I mean, it all makes sense, whoever's going to review it probably should be able to review it in 24 hours if that's.
Yeah, I would say, I think our agent is, I don't know if our agent, our conservation agent is full time or part time. I think it's full time at this point, but I think 48, at least two business days notice seems to be fair enough on fill. What are my conditions for that? What do folks feel about that?
Yeah, I think, or maybe there's a, it's less of a notice of its source and more of a condition surrounding inspection and testing of the fill randomly as it arrives at site, so.
Testing's tough.
But there's some amount of
Yeah, the testing.
And construction debris when it, when it is arriving at the construction site.
Yeah, the testing is, the testing is tough because we have to prescribe what we're testing for. So, you know, we could, you know, usually with testing of soil, obviously, you want it to be clean and free of stumps, right? Clean fill and the traditional use of the word. I think one of the concerns you have with certain fill is just fines, right? You don't want it to be too like, you don't want it to, to you know, sort of subside over time or filter into through rocks and things. So, you don't want it to, you don't want to have too many fines potentially from a water mounding, you know, issue and sort of percolation issue. So, I think, you know, general, you know, clean gravel fill to me would be the condition. Like I said, I can propose something based on what we've done in the past, but I'm hearing 24 hours too soon, seven days too long. We want to encourage local fill where we can and make it practical for our local inspectors to have an opportunity to object. So, I will, that seems to be where we're headed towards. Todd, any objections to that?
No, no objection from me.
So, I think that the medias issue is going to be septic, which we can talk about just for just a few minutes, and I don't, I don't really want to necessarily come to any decisions on this, on the Board of Health issues today, but I want to just sort of touch upon it. And so, I think, you know, the critical issue is we're asking for a foot of, a foot depth of distance between groundwater. And so, you know, I think I'm going to ask Jonathan and Todd, Jonathan Fitch and Todd, to weigh in on, on your perspective around the additional foot that was asked by the Board of Health. And sort of how you, how you, how you think we should approach this. It is a 12, it is a 12 bedroom septic. It is a large, it is a sizable, it's a sizable system. Conventional design. But nevertheless, it's under a Title V standard as proposed, and the board is asking for an additional foot. And so, how do, how do you feel about that, Jonathan and Todd?
Well, I read the submissions of the applicant and the Board of Health on this issue pretty carefully. And after our hearing, I'm not convinced that there are any health or safety issues that are presented by maintaining the Title V standard of four feet. I don't, I don't see that a health and safety benefit of an additional one foot has been articulated by the Board of Health.
That our, that our local standard and the reasons therefore outweigh the compelling need for affordable housing and applying a state standard is what I hear.
Yes.
Todd, what are your, did you, I assume you watched the video, Todd, so I'm going to ask you as if you did. And just wondering what your, what your thoughts were, you know, on that.
Yeah, yeah, I watched the video and got caught up. So, clearly, it's a, you know, it's a one foot difference, four foot versus five foot local, and yeah, I, I, I come at it where, you know, I agree with Jonathan's statement in that the applying the state standard does not pose a health and safety risk. I, I, I can also see the argument that our local standard is put in place to safeguard health and safety. So, I, I, I don't know if I've kind of made up my mind on that just yet.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, how do you, what is your sort of first impression? And we can close out after this and sort of revisit this next time, but I just.
Um, I, I guess I agree. I I understand both sides of the argument. I'm not sure that I know enough or am convinced by either side at this point. What I found somewhat notable is that we've got a local standard and, you know, clearly, the applicant is going towards the Commonwealth standard, but the remark that he made about could potentially have additional detrimental impacts to, I guess, sort of the conservation issue of disturbance and remediation around the Vernal Pool, didn't seem like there was many steps taken to even consider the local five foot separation. It was just, hey, Commonwealth is four foot, that's what we're following, we're not even going to entertain it. And so, I don't know if we have the mandate or ability, but it seems like it would go a long way if there was at least some steps taken to address it, provide like reasonable justifications outside of just straight up cost that it's imfeasible or impractical to do.
Yeah, and that's where we get into the enforceability issue of that. And, you know, we you know, our, again, our, our charge is to help facilitate the development of affordable housing, right? Like, that's, that is what we're here to do in a safe, in a safe way. I don't know what the applicant would do, and I'm not, I'm not saying this to advocate for his position, but the town has a compelling need for affordable housing. It is unclear whether adding even six inches as the Chair of Conservation proposed as a compromise would even be enforceable, right? We could say, it's, we're saying it's not a binary decision, maybe it's, maybe we'll ask for six inches. I don't even know that that's enforceable. And we could test it, and we could delay this project for probably a year or two. If the applicant doesn't want to do it and wants to push back, or he could potentially do it. I mean, it's, hey, you know, the first two opinions I've written have both gotten appealed, so why not go for three for three at this point, you know? So, I think that's the only, that, that's really the question, you know, I mean, we also, I like to act with fairly conservative on the health and safety issue here, because I, I'm not a scientist, and we're placed in a position to be the deciders of the conditions. And so, you know, I don't like to play around with, 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 with the gray area too much either, right? And so, but the problem we run into is that, you know, we've, we allow for raised systems for new homes, but we don't allow it for old homes. And, and the local standard somehow implies that, you know, a a molecule of water knows the date that the foundation was poured. And I, and I don't think that that's quite, quite the reality of it, and I know that their position is it's manifest injustice. You know, for folks who have an existing home to not be able to, you know, fix the septic, and we can make allowances for that. At the same time, it's either safe or it's not. And so, the same rationale that which we're saying you need to, the applicant has to raise the system because you have the risk of endangering others, but if your foundation was poured prior to a certain date, then apparently that risk to others is less important, and then we're focused only on the individual rights. And so, I think that that's, this is, this is a fundamental, this is the challenge that we face with the local regs and the law and, and here, so, and 40B. So, that, that's what we struggle with, right? And I think there isn't strong case law to support the, imposition of the local standard. The question is, do we put, you know, do we ask for just enough where the applicant's willing to do it and not push back too much? I mean, I think that's kind of also, you know, a different strategy here, right? Do you ask for four inches or six, or, you know, does it even make a difference? And is that condition, do we know whether that condition is really necessary to make the project work? And I think he would say no, because Title V is the standard, and that's why he hasn't made an effort, because applicant, you know, 40B is very clear that Title V seems to be the standard imposed unless you can, which we haven't been successful in imposing a local standard yet. So, anyway, I'm going to stop talking and see if Jonathan or Todd or Jonathan have any other questions or comments to that.
Well, I think we're on thin ice if we, if we decide that it should be four inches higher or six inches higher as some kind of compromise between the the local regulation and Title V. I personally am not aware of anything other than kind of a speculative basis for why that would improve health and safety.
Yep.
And I don't think we should speculate, just to be clear.
No, we, we should not speculate. That's a good point, Jonathan. And I think to your point about compromising the local standards with our own new unique standard, I think only hurts the argument that the local standard is in fact the proper standard. So, I think, I think that may be a bad idea. I think it's probably an application of the local standard, and in the absence of an expert saying if you had six inches here, you'd be all, you know, you'd be A okay, and there'd be no risk. I don't think we have that nugget of information from a learned professional, so I, I don't think to Jonathan's point, we, we can speculate and come up with new, new distances, but that's sort of where I'm.
Yeah, I, maybe I, I still, I'm not maybe, I'm still trying to understand how all these processes work, so please bear with me, but it's, it seems to me that we're trying to marry or balance the, the local interests and the local bylaws with the need for affordable housing, and obviously, there's, there are state standards as well, but to the extent that we can accomplish affordable housing and meet the requirements of the local bylaws, that seems like that's the ideal solution for everybody. And so, I don't know what the outcome of this information would, would be, and I'm not suggesting that we should go and try to come up with some intermediate thing, but it seems as part of this process, if we could say, hey, we have looked at the impacts associated with meeting the local requirements, and it makes the project infeasible for this way, that way, this way, whatever it is. Well, that, I think, is a more clear and compelling argument to say, okay, no conditions, or whatever that decision ultimately means. It just seems like it's sort of two very firm stances without an attempt maybe from either side to try to understand where this causes the, the affordable housing to become infeasible or impactful to the point where it's is detrimental to the project.
Yeah, as you, your last comment is, I underscore and bold your last comment, there's no, there seems to be no attempt of, of understanding. I think, you know, our, our, our Board of Health Regulations are pretty restrictive and prohibitive to any new development. I think you know, it's, it's based in a theory of health and safety, and I think it's informed, but I don't know that it is, you know, obviously, it's science, and so there's nothing that's 100%. Like I said, I, I think we're batting around essentially asking and conditioning an additional foot and, and rolling the dice that the applicant will A, not appeal, or B, or B, not be successful, and somehow our local rig would be upheld. And so, I, I don't have, I guess I don't, I don't have really an opinion other than that. I guess I don't want to delay just to get back to where we are now. That doesn't seem, that seems to me to be an injustice to the local needs as well as to the applicant. But on that note, I, I know Todd wants to think about it some more, and I think, John, you know, you bring a, a, an unjaded and fresh look to those of us who've been on the CBA. So, I appreciate, you know, your perspective here. I think it's bringing us sort of back a little bit towards, you know, sort of focusing on the local regs. So, I think, I think we're sort of in, I think at the moment, I feel the board is a bit split, so why don't we break for today? I'm going to put together a draft decision, which I think is going to be an approval with conditions, but I don't know, we know all of those conditions yet, right? I think that's the track we're moving on here. So, I will put together a draft decision where we're leading towards an approval granting certain waivers with the conditions we spoke about, and let's revisit this Board of Health depth issue, really solely next time, and we'll hopefully close that out too. So, we don't have to schedule another meeting right now, but it would be great if we could while we're here, if that's possible. I don't know if folks can do that.
Real quick, and I spoke with Jonathan about this earlier, Whitney Farms is coming in with a amendment to a change in their houses, the plan of their houses. They are coming in, they're bringing it on Tuesday, the 7th, which means you have to hear it within 20 days.
Okay.
So, just to throw that at you. Plus, I do have a couple of more special permit renewals.
So, we need a regular meeting, and we need a deliberations meeting, is what you're saying?
Yes. And I don't know if I have enough time to advertise the two renewals in the paper within 20 days, but if you pick a day like the 27th of October, 28th, actually, the 27th would be the end. I would have a time to do it all.
So, if you want to do the, so that you're saying for the, for the non-deliberation matters, the 27th is a good day?
Yeah.
Board members?
I'm just looking at my calendar here.
It's a Monday. It's tough for me.
Yeah.
If you could do the, I could get in the paper on the 9th, so you could do it, can you do it that 23rd?
I could do it the 23rd in the evening.
It's a Thursday night?
I, I, I run into a hard stop on Thursday night, the 23rd.
All right, well, then, bag, forget the, forget the two renewals for now, because they're going to be renewed, even though you don't have a meeting. So, why don't you just concentrate on when you could hear the Whitney Farm one, because that's a law that you have to do.
Yeah. Whitney Farms, you said we had 20 days, and we're going to get it when, on the 7th?
On Tuesday, the 7th. And it's basically, they just want to change, right now, they just want to change a couple of the houses. And it's basically, they just want to change, right now, they just want to change a couple of the house designs to single family, it's a totally different look of a house.
Can we do the 22nd at eight or nine AM?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Jonathan, why don't you tell me what you are, what works best for you in the week of the 20?
Well, okay, the 20th and the 21st work for me. On the 22nd, I am, I'm traveling to a conference and I'm going to be tied up all through Friday with that. And then I'm going to a wedding on the weekend, but the.
I mean, you could do the week before too, it doesn't, I can get you all, everything.
I'm traveling the week before, it's a little tough. The 21st, can we do the 21st at eight or nine AM for a deliberations meeting in a Whitney Farms design change?
Okay, that'd be great.
I can't make that.
Why don't we do the 21st, Todd, can you do the 21st for just the Whitney Farms design change at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning?
Yes, I can.
All right, so why don't we do the 21st at nine AM for Whitney Farms only? Mr. Hammond doesn't have to join for that one. And then what about the, we're cutting it close, can we do this 16th or 17th for another deliberations meeting in the morning?
I'd do the 17th.
This is a Friday at the 17th?
In the morning, yeah.
I am not available. All school meeting at Pine Health and my daughter's presenting.
Got to be there.
Got to be there. Uh, okay, what about next Friday, the 10th? You guys are really pushing me to get a draft together.
So, so look, Friday, the 17th, I could do that at, at nine AM, I could do nine AM.
Nine on the 17th, can we do that for an hour for deliberations?
Yeah.
All right. Do nine o'clock in the 17th for deliberations. I will have a draft to you all before that and we will focus on Board of Health.
Okay.
Great.
Well, uh, the meeting, do I have a motion to? I guess I never, we never actually motioned to open the deliberations technically.
Sure you did.
Uh, yeah, I guess that was, that was right before the recording started. So now we're going to motion to continue, I'm going to move to continue the hearing until the 17th at some of the hearings, excuse me. I'm going to move to continue the deliberations of the comprehensive permit to October 17th at nine AM. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Uh, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Your lobby?
Aye.
Right, aye continues until the 17th at nine AM. I move to close this meeting.
Seconded.
Looks like it's unanimous, all, we have all ayes here, so meeting is closed. We'll see you all, I think, on the 17th next.
Thank you.
Thank you.